Good afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would entertain a motion to, uh, we convene. I would move the second in discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was about to make.
I'm sorry, second. I need to do the second. Thank you.
Madam President, will you make any, uh, acting action?
Yes, you do.
What, uh?
Councilmember Baker, can we have the motion?
Thank you.
No, actually, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I have three motions. First, I move to authorize the city attorney to represent the councils and chooses at the same hourly rate paid to the city attorney regarding disciplinary actions against Councilwoman Lewis concerning a development deal resulting in a five to seven million dollar loss to the city and her contact, her contact towards staff and officials, with council members and staff authorized to be opposed by the procure attorney.
Second, I would move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, uh, fourth.
I have a second motion. I move that we hold a special call meeting at 3:00 PM on November 26th here or at City Hall if this location is unavailable for the purposes of an executive session to include personnel disciplinary matters litigation in this case.
Second, I would move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes five to two.
And lastly, I, uh, would like to make a motion to instruct the city manager to instruct our communications director to approve all communications regarding these matters, to, uh, to have all communications regarding these matters, um, approved by the procure attorney.
Second, I would move the second in discussion. Yes, go ahead.
First of all, I would like to say that I want to tell all my constituents, do not worry. Um, this was not what, I have done nothing wrong. And, uh, this is not what we discussed was going to happen. Um, but someone is going to roll, he's doing their own thing. And so, um, this is not professional, this is not what our motives put us in office to do, which is fight large investigations against each other. But this is what my colleagues choose to do, and I am fine.
Let's vote, discussion. Discussion, go ahead.
It is important, uh, to understand that, um, when you hear actions like this, you entrusted us to be fiscally responsible and to work on your behalf, to not allow any municipality or anybody to divert funds from seven, five to seven million dollars in the direction of any other municipality. We struggled too long, we fought too long to become a city. Whether it's intentional, uh, it needs to be found out. And if there are any, if there is any proof, we need to move forward in a way that you would have us to move forward as your representatives. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Um, is this investigation going to be finished by November 26th? Um, Attorney Walker, several of us are going out of town for the National League of Cities. That is, is, is this investigation completed by November 26th? Let's be realistic.
So I think, from what, from what I've heard today, it, it sounds like you're going to meet to further discuss this on the 26th.
Is this what, this act, is that what we needed for?
Um, I think I can speak to that. Uh, we're going to procure an attorney.
She had, she still has the call.
So when are we meeting on November 26th, four?
So it sounded like to discuss disciplinary proceedings, personnel, real estate litigation.
So, I thought that was already discussed, I thought it was, we were supposed to procure a, uh, attorney to investigate, do a thorough investigation.
So I do plan to do that, bring in outside, um, attorneys. However, you guys also moved to meet again to discuss disciplinary proceedings, real estate litigation, and personnel on the 26th. So that's kind of just where we stand right now. So I will bring that attorney back after he, he will speak to whoever does, he feels necessary, his judgment, her judgment, their judgment. Um, and basically, he'll take over, he'll do a direction. I'll bring him, her, back to the meeting, each direction.
I'll leave the discussion to you.
No, that's fine. Okay, let's vote. That passes five.
The term.
This is the communication.
Oh.
That passes, uh, six, one. All right, I would entertain a motion to, uh, throw the work session. How many the motion to close the work session? I would move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, uh, two, name. Your other's up? I'll go with yours. Okay, that's the end. Madam President, go ahead.
Roll call, roll call, uh, so, are you calling, we officially calling the meeting here? Roll call for today. Councilmember Roll.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Present.
Councilmember Wood.
Present.
Councilmember Gilleyard.
You.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Flea.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Also, present is Mayor Edwards, the city manager, Mr. Donald, city attorney, Mr. Walker, you have a call.
Okay. Well, by invitation by chaplain, followed by his major lead.
Those of you that would like to stand, if you'll stand with us. I have our junior chaplain with us tonight, but he's actually, he would pray. Let us pray. Dear gracious God, we've heard that a picture's worth a thousand words. Not only in words, oh God, but a picture's worth a, a vision, a reminder, a focus. We stand here today with our grandson. Reminds us that when we voted to become a city, I realized that I would never see the benefit. But I did it for him, and my children, and my children's children, and those generations to come. And that's why we all did it. For some of us would never see what we voted for. That's why every day, every moment is a special moment. Every decision that we make is going to affect all the generations to come. So we need your wisdom, oh God, we need your guidance. We need you to bless us. But even as we grow as a city, we now have experienced voting and seeing new come in those who we love to go. But it's part of what we do as a city. And it reminds us that it's not personal, it's not about us. It's about those who are coming behind us. So, oh God, we pray that everything we do and everything that we say will be for those who are coming, the least of them, and that they will benefit for every vote, every decision. And we expect you to continue to guide our leadership. Our mayor and our council, our city manager, all our department heads, so that those who are looking at us, that we'll make the right decision for them. This we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Madam President, I would definitely have no announcement for these things.
Correct, Mayor, there is no presentation of announcement. Next on the agenda is adoption of the council agenda.
I'll entertain a motion.
Are there any changes?
Any change, no, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for November 12th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
I would move the second in discussion.
I can't hear you.
She wants to pull the, the, the man from the consent, that we've already, we got a motion. Would you be okay with the, with the, uh?
It's not on the agenda.
It's on the consent.
Item number four.
Are we approving the whole agenda or the consent? No, I just want to pull it. Her, would you entertain that?
It's not on the consent agenda.
Item number four.
Item number four on the consent agenda.
I'm looking at item number four.
Come under Dr. Rose.
That's the strategic plan, not the...
That's what you said, that's what she wants, that's what she said.
What are you talking about? That's not the T down, it's not.
No, I'm in central.
Would the maker of the motion accept?
We failed this two times. No, this is just the second. It was on the, on the agenda last.
Madam President, how many times have we held?
It was moved to last, at the last meeting, to the regular agenda and tabled until today's meeting.
Okay. Okay, Annie? Mr. Kalie?
I do think it's important to note that it was tabled at the last meeting and not discussed.
That's what I said.
Right, and so now it's on the consent agenda to once again not be discussed. We have not had a public discussion about it. Is that correct?
It was tabled because Councilmember Gilleyard said she had not read it.
Let me, let me ask the question in different ways. Have we ever had a public discussion in a regular council meeting about this strategic plan?
To adopt, to adopt the agenda.
Okay, uh, let's vote. Go ahead.
Uh, the work session, the, uh, second item with a T down, is that on the consent agenda?
No, it's not.
Okay, okay.
Okay, let's vote. On the favor. Yes. Proving the agenda. Proving today's agenda. Okay. Let me see the hands again, Madam President. Excuse me, Mr. Kalie. Let me see the hands again. All those who are voting, babe. Voting on today's agenda. No, on the entire.
Going to adopt the agenda.
Right. Right. All those in favor? If they are, if they would like to vote, so we can go home.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the removal of the strategic plan from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Second.
I would move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, you know.
Next, we have the approval of the October 22nd council meeting minutes.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes on October 22nd, 2019.
Second.
I would move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, that passes, you know. Madam President.
Next item is puppy comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and puppy comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their addresses prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer, shall observe all rules of decorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenities shall be tolerated. The presiding officer, officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the code law. We have a total of ten speakers. I will call the first five off, if you will line up as I call your name. Juliet Rankin, Barbara Lee, Yosina, Bradford, Valerie Deluge, Glenda Collins.
Juliet Rankin, District Four. And I just wanted to comment on, um, I came up before and I spoke about, um, one of the people here on the radio, and I heard, uh, you guys on the radio again on Veterans Day, I believe. And I just wanted to, um, make some comments about what I heard, I didn't hear the whole thing. But Councilwoman Gunn was on there, and she was saying that, um, gentrification was good. No, Councilwoman Gunn, he tried to help you out. The poor people here do not feel gentrification is good. We're not facing it here like other places, but if that's what you're bringing, think again. Okay? You cannot go out in public saying stuff like that, as I said, he tried to help you out. I heard what you said about Overstreet, and that you weren't hurt for the seniors. So I don't know where you were coming from, on one side you're saying it's good, on the other side you're saying you're trying to help the seniors who are going to be displaced. So, you have a majority progressive people here that kind of thinking we do not agree with. You need to come again, and you do that a lot. And I'm just here to let you know, we don't like that. Okay? Uh, also, I'm not, I'm hoping that we haven't thrown seven million dollars away when we have a seven million dollar deficit because we don't like other people. Do not throw our money away for that. Has it gotten to that point? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and the citizens of the city of South Fulton. My name is Barbara McKee, and I live at 120 Alacante Street in District Six. I'm coming here tonight, most of you know me as Miss Lift or Barbara. Uh, with Lift, that I created and founded in two thousand and four. Our mission was to feed, clothe, and provide homes for individuals. However, the need was so great when we got here in two thousand and four, that we had to ask for partners. So throughout, from two thousand and four to now, I asked people to partner with me, and they did. We fed, at any time, on a monthly basis, two, three thousand people in poverty for food. You, many of you might not know that this area is considered a food desert, which is an area that has limited access to affordable and nutritious food. So in saying that, we need to understand that there's a lack of good food here in the city of South Fulton. But I partnered now with Kingdom of God Church. We will have a food pantry opening on November 6th at ribbon cutting. We invite you all out to that November 16th at eleven AM. Pastor Warren Henry and his church, the Community Food Pantry, will be having their ribbon cutting, a Thanksgiving meal, and the food pantry will be open. So we are very thankful to that organization that has stepped up and would like to fight hunger in our area. So we ask that you come out on November 16th and support this, a ribbon cutting at eleven AM. Then you will come and get you a nice pre-Thanksgiving meal and to the food pantry. And you can bring a can of food if you like. So again, thank you.
Good evening. Um, hi, I'm Valerie Deluge, um, a little under the weather tonight, excuse me. Um, I don't know if this is the appropriate form for this, but I, I'm new to the area, I'm a new homeowner, lived here about three years. Um, I'm over off of Stonewall Hotel and Hamilton Road, twenty-seven thirty-one Navy Lane in the Waterford Commons. I'm, I'm familiar with which, um, district I'm actually in. Um, does anybody know where that would be to, and who was, who else? Right there at our intersection, um, from getting on from Stonewall Hotel to Hamilton Road, it's, um, it's a very dangerous intersection, as probably everybody who travels that way knows. And I think that, um, you know, that the first woman has concerns about the development of the city and the change and everything like that, but, um, it's inevitable that it is going to be growing because of all the underdeveloped land and the growing of the greater Atlanta area. And I think these are the types of things that have to be thought about for infrastructure, that if we're going to be building and building, that we have to, um, support the infrastructure for that. And, um, right now, um, I, I would suggest either roundabouts, um, or there is room that you could take by eminent domain to widen that, to make a designated right-hand turn lane onto Hamilton, heading towards Camp Creek. And also, for the people that are turning onto Stonewall Hotel, making a left-hand turn onto Stonewall Hotel, you could also, um, divide some of that for a right-hand shoulder pass lane for the rest of the traffic on Hamilton. Um, there's a lot of school buses and whatnot that are really having a hard time in the mornings at certain times of the day, and it's just going to get worse. There's a lot of development further down the road, and that's turning into the main drag. So we really have to figure out a way to either make Hamilton a, a two, two-lane highway or, or something. So thank you for that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Glenda Collins, District Five, Morning Creek Drive, Elwood HOA. I would like to thank Councilwoman Jackson for the service she bestowed upon District Five for two and a half years. During this time, she listened to the citizens and taxpayers and fought to keep a quick-trip truck stop, waste station, and scale from being built on Buffetton and Flatstones Road. This would have destroyed, destroyed the quality of life in the area and reduced the home prices and eliminated any economical growth. The negative impact with these trucks running their engines twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, would have a negative impact on our environment as well as affected our health. Ms. Bradford?
I don't have anything to say. She, I don't have anything to say, she's been, but thank you.
Next, Calvin Bennett, Aubrey Dennison, Dixon, Sam Bowen, Pam Harris, and Joyce Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Calvin Bennett, sixty-seventy-five, last post place, calling from the city of South Fulton, uh, District Five. And I came, came here to just give my thanks to Constablewoman Jackson. You know, um, when I met you two years ago, when we were all running to represent the city to give service to the city, you know, I met a stern black woman. And over the past two years, I just have to say, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be involved in the politics of this city and to witness, you know, how to put projects together and how to make decisions and how to, uh, motivate people to serve. One thing I know about you, Constablewoman Jackson, is that you're a woman of your word. You always be on the side of righteousness. I've never seen you in a fight when it comes to politics where I disagreed with you. I've always disagreed with you when it came to the politics of the city, fighting crime, code enforcement, even just senior citizens issue. I appreciate being a part of your, the army that you put together to either work on the medals. Even though it was a project that we couldn't follow through on, it was a good exercise for us as citizens to work together and to show, you know, how to get things done. And sometimes how we have to go around obstacles. So your, your two and a half years, regardless of the others, your two and a half years for District Five, you've done a wonderful job. You've done a wonderful job. And I'm, I wanted to just say thank you for giving me a chance to be a part of your team. And I'd like to say to the other constableman, the, the constableman-elect, I know courage, you're my man. I know he's going to do a great job, he'll have my support also. And thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am tired of appearing before this council requesting that you all do something about these motorized vehicles. It is a pain in the derelict ear. I'm seventy-six years old, I had no idea that in my last days on earth that I would have to listen to that blank-to-blank noise. It, those vehicles are out there, but when I call an Iowa one, they ask me the address, ain't no address. Because you, if you head south on, um, Eden Road from Camp Creek Parkway, all the way down to Miles Road. If you look on the left, you'll see five or six different trails where they're, where they drive. Uh, less than eight of a mile from, from Camp Creek Parkway, if you look on your left, there was a, used to have a poster sign of no trespass, it was a green gate. They have taken that down, and they ride until midnight. I mean, I don't know what to do. I hate to see about trying to do litigation, but I expected more from this council than this. We keep hiring people, we need to provide good service with the resources that we have. And I don't think that anybody should have to put up with that. Uh, this past Saturday night, I know they were, Saturday night, they were out till midnight. It used to be just on Sunday afternoon. Um, and it used to be, uh, I could tell the racial identity, because they used to have their, where you could see, now they have these shields on, you don't know who they are. I just know that they got a heck of a lot of noise, and I'm sick and tired of them. So I'm asking you, not let me come down here and flap my jaws, but if you look at this issue, and, uh, if you need a task board, do that. We, we, we talked about, uh, a previous meeting about a five-hundred-dollar tank, I don't know whether it's reality or not. But you need to allocate some funds for that, it's just not right, that I should have to put up with this. And I'm sick and tired of begging, and I'm not going to keep begging, I'll be trying to seek other action. Thank you very much for allowing me to share my feelings, and I hope you have a resolution, because I'm, I'm told for this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Pamela Harris, I live in Montclair Estates. Uh, I'm in District One, and I'm actually piggybacking on my neighbor Colonel Dolores Hampton. She lives in the first house in Montclair Estates. Uh, since the diversion of traffic from Cascade Road, the traffic is coming down Bruce Place, and someone is going to get killed, uh, in that intersection of Montcom Drive, well, Montcom turns into Bruce Place and New Hope Road. There's an accident at least once a week. Uh, I, I, it's my fear that it's going to be a fatal accident, so I'm hoping that someone won't really take a look at that, because it's dangerous. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Bowen, I'm a resident of District Two, I live at thirty-five fifty Alton Way. And over, uh, about two years ago, you appointed myself and about seven other members of the Code Enforcement Board. Since that time, we've had over two thousand cases. A significant portion of those cases have been blighted properties. So I'm here today representing my board members and asking you all to expand the Brighted Property Fund and give us tools we can use to help our residents. As you know, the, the primary mission of the Code Enforcement Board is to promote and improve the health, safety, and wellness of our community. And our hands are somewhat tied when we have residents come before us pleading and begging for properties to be fixed right across the street from them, where there are dead animals in there, people who are up to no good in there. And we could only tell them, speak to your council member, or speak to your legislators, do whatever you can, but we can't help you. So, again, I urge you all to, um, move past whatever differences you all may have and work towards expanding the Bligh, Blighted Property Fund and give us whatever tools you can to help us go after these slum lords, go after these individuals that are doing well in our community, and maybe even turn some of these properties into assets for our community. So again, please consider that when you all make a decision on that particular motion, I believe. Again, my name is Sam Bowen, who is a representative.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Joyce Jones, I'm in District One. And, um, I just want to say, um, I think it's a shame that the taxpayers of South Fulton, um, you're already in a deficit, and that you're having to pay for lawyers to fight, uh, councilwomen, uh, whoever that's, um, uh, uh, that's, we are councilpeople that's causing disruption or whatever, that we are having to pay for lawyers. or whatever, that we are having to pay for lawyers, and we are already in a deficit. And I think that it's a shame that our taxes don't go up for paying for lawyers, and I think it's not fair. And I don't think that we should have to be the one to pay for that. And I think that someone else should have to go to the lawyers. Maybe they should have to pay for it. And I think that it's a shame. And I think that you all should look into whoever caused the trouble or whatever, that they should be the one to pay for taxes, I mean, for lawyers. Because I don't think we should have to pay for the lawyers, because we did not cause whatever happened, and I think that they should have to pay for their own lawyers. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, ladies and gentlemen, comments for today. Next on the agenda is comments from council.
I have a cleanup in partnership with the Cascade Business Merchants Association on this Saturday. I will be meeting at 10 o'clock at the Cascade Drapery Range on December ninth. I have my District One Town Hall meeting. It will be at the Oakley Library. I encourage you to come out. And I am looking forward to our CFO's report, so he can clarify for the, clarify our financial standing based on the comments that we heard. We do not have the deficit. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out.
So, I also would like to, I'm looking forward to the CFO's report as well to clarify that information as far as the deficit. Just to respond to a couple of the constituents that came up, the young lady, welcome to the city of South Fulton. There are traffic improvements that are coming to that location. There is a light that's proposed there. You will start seeing probably construction or those type of improvements beginning in February, okay, of 2029, okay? Also, too, thank you, Ms. Rankin, for bringing that information, bringing that information in regards to what I said on the radio. Not necessarily was I saying that I am for gentrification, but I was just saying that some gentrification is good in certain areas. We do need some parts of this area to be gentrified. So, I'm not saying that it's for everybody, but I definitely look out for seniors. So, I do thank you for keeping me on my toes and you pointing that out. Also, too, District Two, we will be participating in the cleanup this weekend. I encourage all of our residents to definitely get involved. You'll see cleaning people and volunteers out and about, so please watch out for us and don't speed, because that was what was happening last time, so a lot of us were at the very end of our life. Also, too, on December the 12th, we will be having our annual charity for Bring Out the Dogs at Saint James Lab, so we're looking forward to that. All of the community is invited out. And thank you to all of the schools that allowed for me to come in this week to do our anti-vulcan campaign. That was very important to, for our students to participate, and that was very exciting as well. So, our schools are really strong, and we have to believe in our school. And lastly, Ms. Ivory, I understand about the ATVs. We are definitely working on that. Our police have, are getting drones to police that. If you go look back at the tape of the Cab County chasing the ATV riders, it's just something that we're really trying to curb, and it is being worked on. I know you feel like it's not happening soon enough, but we are working on that. So, continue to be vigilant and let us know when you have those issues. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you all for coming out. District Three will have an economic development town hall meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM. Our guest speaker will be Mr. Pike, and he will be there to do a TAD discussion. We did approve that legislation with voters. Thank you for doing that. That will help us with these development efforts throughout our city. He also will be there to talk about the different developments that's going on in District Three. At the last council meeting, I did announce a article that was published in Atlanta Journal of Business Constitution about the health and development that the Fulton County Development Authority voted on and approved. So, we will have that, we will have that information available. It was an article published in Atlanta Journal Constitution, and we will have the fact sheet from the Fulton County Development Authority. We will also give you an update on the Job Corps project, and then we also have some information, updates on the redevelopment project that's going on in reference to the apartments on Welcome Mar Road. So, if you have any questions about development in District Three, if you want to hear about the TAD legislation, please come out. And then also, we will have our region representative from GDOT, who will be there to discuss any questions you may have about the GDOT process and any projects, GDOT projects, that is going on in our region. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you, if you are a resident of District Three, to bring you updates.
I am going to follow up on the National League of Cities Awards that we receive, along with Las Vegas, because I live in Buc, Iowa, Evanston, Illinois, Napa, California, and it's all about health and equity. At any rate, last week, my legislative specialists had to go for me because I couldn't go to Maryland to, for the meeting of all the cities coming together. And what they came up with was a comprehensive coordinated policy agenda, internal resource alignment, structure for equity and race, authentic civic, authentic civic engagement. That's very important. External partnerships, collaboration and alignment, strategic funding and financing. And for the next 90 days, everyone will be working on a draft to ensure that they completely plan. So, not only was that a great opportunity, it gave us national attention, but, and Mr. City Manager might have something to say about this in his report, but we got an invitation to apply for an All-American City Award that's related to this. So, that's two big national things that we have going for us. I'm really, really excited about that. On Thursday, District Four will have an economic development and environment meeting at the Grand Hotel, we'll drive from 7:00 to 9:00. They have some really great speakers. I think there's a fire on everyone's cheer. And of course, our next meeting, maybe I should do it now, we will have a Christmas party at the same hotel, December the 12th. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening. I haven't reached out to this person, because I didn't know if they'd be here, but I have this caller, and he will be the new incoming councilperson for this council. No, but he will be the next person, and believe me, whatever you need from me, I am here, and the community and everybody that has worked with me, I'm sure that they are willing to continue to work, because we want to see District Five be what we know can be, okay? Thank you. And I would also like to thank Parks and Recreation for making our October 31st, 2019 Halloween, well, not Halloween, whatever they call it. I was the, which call the person with the pen? Willie Walker. I was Willie Walker. So, it was my bad. I was Willie Walker. But anyway, it was beautiful, and Cory, that is something I hope that we can keep going. Rimmerdale does that, and hopefully that'll be an annual thing that we can do at Verdi, to try and bring Verdi back to life, and it's something. But it was, it was beautiful, and people were still standing outside when I left at 8:30 to go into the Hunter House. So, if that's something, it was awesome. So, if that's something that we can do, I would gladly appreciate that for our history. Also, we're going to have our annual Ugly Sweater Christmas Party on December the 21st, is it? Tony, 20th or 21st, whatever that Friday is. We'll be having that from 6:00 until 9:00. And we're just asking everybody to come out, and the Health Fair, and I think he said it's going to be on November the 23rd. It's going to be the Health Fair for everybody for enrolling, as well as the animals. This will be the first annual fair that we're having for, to get our dogs and our cats immunized, immunizations done. So, please come out. Thank you.
I'm going to miss you, Ms. Jackson. Some of you all may have heard, we have a presidential debate coming to town next week. It's actually the first time there's been a presidential debate in the metro Atlanta area in over 30 years. So, for those of you all who do not know, when there's a presidential debate, they actually here for the entire week. They're doing rallies all over town, pulling town halls. Please go and meet those candidates and ask them to come to South Fulton, and ask them what they're doing for people on the south side of Atlanta in South Fulton, and let them know that you vote, and that we vote. I want to say this. I don't have kids. I think I'm the only person up here that doesn't have kids. And I'm told that, like, no matter how many books I read, or whatever it is that I learned about kids, I will never, ever know what it is to have a kid until I have a kid. The same is true for cityhood. Lots of people love to say, oh, y'all knew what y'all were getting into? Nobody knew what we were getting into. And lots of people like to claim they're the fathers of the city, the mothers of the city. Let me tell you, it's these eight people here that are the fathers and the mothers of the city. Other people helped deliver this city, and we thank God for all the specialists that helped this baby be delivered. But when they got done at the gold dome, we were the ones that came home with this baby. We stayed up till 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. We saw this baby do his terrible twos when the answer for everything was spelled. And so, for our outgoing parent, Rosie Jackson, I just want to say, thank you so much for helping us take care and raise this baby. To my new stepdaddy coming in, I want to say, welcome. You missed the terrible twos, but we got a lot more toddler years. We got a lot more growing to do. So, thank you so much. South Fulton forever.
Okay. I'm Black Lee did that, so my buzzer won't go off, but special thanks to you, Councilwoman Jackson, it has been a pleasure. I do have a lot to report real quick, though. So, for many of you who live in District Seven in Oakley Township area, I know there were about 1,400 homes inconvenienced over the past three weeks because of a bridge being out, I believe, as of close of today. That bridge has been repaired, so now you have two ways in and out of that subdivision. Special thanks to our Public Works, Mr. Venezuela, who came out to a community meeting and assisted us with that, and thank you as well, Mr. Ody Donal, for helping us bring that to a close. It was a real inconvenience, and I thank you, thank you, people of Oakley Township who tolerated and put up with us throughout that time. Second, I would like to also say thank you to the people of District Seven for reelecting me. I promise to continue to bring integrity and progressive legislation to the city of South Fulton. With that being said, on Tuesday next week, Wednesday at Saint James Lab, I am going to be having a thank you celebratory event that's going to be free. It will be hosted by comedian LeVar Walker, as well as Q Parker of Hit Group 112, Grammy nominated 112, and Wingo Richard from Jagged Edge. So, please come out to Saint James Lab. Congress will be in District Two, so we expect your hospitality. Thank you. On November 23rd, I will be hosting a celebrity basketball game at the Tracy Ryerson as well from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. We're going to be giving everyone who comes a turkey, as well as canned goods. I've partnered with a lot of people. This is the third year we've been doing this, and this year is coming to the whole national area, and we will be giving out up to 1,000 turkeys. So, please come, bring people, bring your kids. It's going to be a family-friendly event at the Tracy Ryerson. And lastly, on December 16th, we will be having a caroling event sponsored by Q Parker and Friends. We're going to be running shuttles from District Seven all the way to 200 Peachtree for the seniors. It's going to be a plated dinner. Please come out. Angie Stone, Tony Terry, it was a big event last year, and we plan to make it even bigger. Thank you so much. No, I'm not saying it's not.
I have two things to say. First, I want to acknowledge the fact that we had a groundbreaking in District One for the new pockets, which is going to be great. I want to thank Councilman Ralph for all the support and helping to do that. If you go right in now, if you go right in now, you can see that they're excavating the property. The other thing I want to say is, sometimes your heart gets very humble up here. Someone made the analogy that we are the mothers and fathers of this city. We burned this baby. But if we don't start doing the right thing, then defects could be at our door. Defects will be at our door. I pray that we can move on to be what all of y'all want to be. As we talk about awards, the real game, the do-over, we're excited about that. But when awards come, you still remember, if you don't turn around, defects, that's your doom. So, I, my hope is that we move forward through all of this. And listen, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be negative. We've accomplished a lot. We've accomplished a lot regardless of what has happened, what you may hear, things you may see, and things you may read. We have accomplished a lot. At some point in time, we're going to have to leave the boogers behind. And I think we'll get there. That's all I'm going to say. I'm not going to be negative or anything, you know, but the young lady came up and talked about, you're right, those attorneys will have to be paid. They're going to have to be paid. So, thank you all for believing in us through our good times and our bads, for believing in us and helping us deliver the projects, the projects that you deserve. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brief report today, as you know, at the end of the month is when we provide the written report, but there are quite a few highlights that I just wanted to bring forward. I know one that I'm very excited about, and I know you've been extremely patient about, is that the, we have received the authorization from AT&amp;T to move forward with the city's dedicated 311 number. So, we are excited about that. The actual contract is with the City Attorney's Office for review, once executed, because it will cost, it will also cost us less than $20,000 to be able to provide this service to our citizens. So, that's a very big deal. So, once the city attorney reviews and we execute, it will take about six weeks to be able to have it up and running. So, we expect to beat that January, or end of January timeline. So, of course, we'll be bringing back that rollout to you. Number two, Councilmember Baker highlighted already the opening of the bridge at Oakley Road and Broaden Act. Did reopen today, but it is important to highlight, we've met with GDOT and received an overview of some of the other road and bridge closures for the dilapidated infrastructure that we inherited, and just wanted to highlight that we do have verbal commitments to take on the closed culver at Cascade, as well as support for the bridge. We'll be providing them a letter under the City Manager's signature requesting that they take on about 80% of those costs. And so, we expect for that or some semblance of support to be approved within the next 30 days. And so, we're working with them closely on that. The third is I know that the strategic plan is on the agenda for today, so we're very excited about that. Actually, just last week, we provided, which is a very big testament to the movement of the city, some technical assistance to one of the five largest counties in the state of Colorado, Jefferson County, Colorado, on their path towards implementing their strategic plan. So, that's a big step. So that's a big step from us not having one to giving, uh, advice and, uh, technical support to other municipalities, especially those at the county level. So kudos to all the work that went into that. Uh, finally, well, not finally, but close to finally, uh, I think Councilmember Gil Yard kinda doubled down on that when we look at the All-American City Award, which we were actually requested to apply for, which I think is a good, uh, uh, representation of the work that's happening within the city, um, that just kinda continues the recognition from N L C and I C M A and other respected entities, uh, who wanna highlight the, the good, but very difficult and incomplete work that's taking place, uh, in the city of South Fulton. Uh, we have highlighted the public's, uh, groundbreaking, but we are making progress when it comes to the Public Safety Center that exists in District Seven, new subdivisions, uh, programs, um, one, uh, that is proposed for District Four that'll be coming back, uh, before you, as well as expanded, uh, transportation efforts as well. So really excited about that. And then I think I'll close, as we've talked about development and the city's growth. Kudos to our residents for recognizing the importance of investing, uh, in the tax allocation districts, as well as the opportunity for the homestead exemption, which were both on the ballot at the same time. I think that's very important, because while the homestead exemption gives relief to our residents as they try to pay their normal, uh, annual fees for taxation and help fill our coffers, the T A Ds will allow us to really grow responsibly all around the city without adding the burden to them. And so to see them vote over seventy percent on each one kinda shows that we have a very educated populace who understands not only how to develop, but also how to not take on a greater burden to themselves. So kudos to them for that. And so that, uh, closes out my report for today.
Thank you for that. I did forget to mention in the announcements, and maybe you wanna just throw that on there, that this Saturday is Bulk Trash Collection Day.
That is correct.
You wanna give the, uh, locations, one is Krill Park, to bring your, your trash to Krill.
Yeah, we have, uh, Krill Park, Merk Road, and across the street.
Stonewall.
Stonewall Tale. Uh, and so those three, uh, areas are available. And while we have already set up, uh, pickup for our seniors, we do have, uh, Mister, I believe Mister Valenzuela is here. And so for those residents who have not already called, uh, the city's, uh, twenty-four-seven telephone number to set up, uh, the curbside pickup for any of your bulk trash, uh, we are, we are not supposed to be, but we can still feel some of those, uh, requests, because we wanna make some exceptions for our seniors. Uh, I think, I think that's it for, for that one, Councilmember, thanks for that reminder.
Councilwoman Rose. I'm sorry, wait, she asked for the phone numbers, four seven oh, five five two, four three one one. That's four seven zero, five five two, four three one one. But if you're a senior and you wanna make that, uh, reservation, you have to do it in this room tonight, because it actually closes Friday.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rose.
At the top of the year, there are four individuals that's gonna have to be sworn in, and we just had, uh, the, that ceremony is not budgeted for. So is that something that we're gonna have to consider, or is that something that you have a point, Administrator?
Yeah, so we'll be bringing back a formal recommendation before, uh, the next council meeting, for which you'll have an opportunity to take action. But of course, we're trying to figure it out within budget now. So, uh, it's a little bit too early to say, but we're aware, Mayor, of the process.
With that being said, uh, I think we should consider doing it at a council meeting and not spending money on it. But that's just my opinion.
Madam Clerk.
Next item on the agenda is the CFO's, um, monthly report, the final financial report for September two thousand nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor and Mr. Council. Uh, this is the financial report for September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. It's an audited final report for twenty nineteen. An audited, because we'll have an official one that will be audited. So, in twenty nineteen, we ended up with the seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the good. We had more revenues than we had in expenses. So the revenues were more than expenses by three, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We had the revenues of sixty-nine, two eighty-four, three sixty-one, and our expenses were sixty-eight. If you subtract there, you find out that the difference is that seven hundred and thirty-four, thirty-six. Total other, all that one is from general fund, which is our main fund, general fund. And from all other funds, we had the seven million dollars. Then we had the general revenues. Were more, we went more than we projected by one percent. And our expenses went less, we spent less than what projected by one point one percent. Summary of revenues. We, in the general fund, we had property tax that we had corrected more property tax by eight hundred and forty-eight million than we projected. And the lost tax revenues is thirty-five percent of the total general fund, while the property tax is forty-five percent of the total general fund budget. Business and occupational tax, we saved more than fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand than what we projected. As you see, that most of the revenues are higher than what we projected. This is a summary of general fund revenues. You see that at the end of the fiscal year, we had this sixty, sixty-nine million, two hundred and eighty-four, three sixty-one, which is a hundred percent. Out of that, you see that we corrected a hundred and eighteen thousand more than what we projected. However, there are some areas, this one in brackets means that we corrected more. This one, eight thirty-eight, that means it was under. But at the end of it, um, average is a hundred and eighteen thousand to include. This is just the same of, just showing in a, in a graph form, that's the same revenues. Then we have general fund plus other funds. And general fund, total general fund is still the same number that you saw on the other, uh, page, sixty-nine million, two hundred and eighty-four, three sixty-one. Then we save the, uh, restricted grants of three hundred and sixty-seven. So restricted grant is a fund. We have revenue equals to expenses. So as you're seeing these revenues, you see also corresponding expenses on the preceding pages. And we have Hotel Motel, against a different fund. We sp- uh, we corrected a hundred and eighteen, five eleven. You see the corresponding, uh, expenses. TS Plus, sixty-two, sixty-five, two forty. This is estimated, these are revenues that we received from Food and County. Because until today, whatever we spend on TS Plus, Food and County does do the job for us, and they pay on our behalf. But from now onwards, we will be receiving money from Food and County, they have already given us six point two million dollars. So we will be responsible for doing the projects as well as paying. But so far, we have not paid. They have been doing the project for us, we have been signing, and they have been paying on our behalf. And the next one, we have Solid West, we saved the two hundred and eighty-three, four thirty-nine, you see corresponding expenses, for a total of seventy-six million, two, three hundred and eighty-eight, six, six, one in revenues. The next page is to talk more about expenses. Overall expenses is operating at less than thirteen percent from budgeted amount for the year-to-date. And eighteen percent of the general fund expenditure. Police has spent, police and fire, almost both of them, they spent eighteen percent more than, or less than what was budgeted. And you have, uh, budgeted police twelve percent, and the, uh, fire is eleven percent respectively. The city expenses for our debt, which is twelve million dollars that we already paid, represents twenty percent of our total budget. Public Works went above the budget, what was budgeted for some, several reasons. There were some expenses that came from Food and County after transition. So those ones were not budgeted, but when they came, we had to make some changes to the budget to actual. This is a summary for all departments. Uh, from our elected officials department, each department up to sixty-eight million, five hundred and fifty-four and fifteen, which is a hundred percent. This one shows the percentage of the department for the total expenses for the budget. Again, this is a summary in graph form for expenses. This is where we have our pennies go. We have forty-seven percent of our expenses are for personnel. You know that payroll takes the biggest chunk of our expenses, so it's forty-seven percent. We have seventy percent of our total budget goes to supplies. Contracted services is twenty-one percent. And the, our loan, that's the paid out ten million, uh, twelve million dollars, twenty-five percent, for a total of a hundred percent. Some highlights of our expenses, overall of the general fund expenses, ninety-one percent of overall budgeted amounts. This is a good indicator that we didn't reach a hundred percent, or we didn't go to a hundred and one percent. So we were within our budgets, actually less than, uh, what we budgeted for. E nine one one services that we gave to Food and County, we paid the one twenty-nine million dollar. It's, it was within the budgeted amount. Other funds included restricted, both capital expenses and the solid waste, which have all spent within their budgets. So whatever we received, we spent. Uh, there are times where those funds will spend more, then will make it up for general fund. But they can't spend more than what they corrected. This is expenses, uh, in summary form, again, you have forty-eight million dollar. That's specifically for general fund. You have ten thousand dollars that is transferred into all the Americans. You voted, Council voted that we need this one every year. It doesn't have revenues. Revenues are transferred from general fund. E nine one one, one point nine one, as of now, we still don't have revenues for E nine one one. We have to transfer it from general fund. Then we have restricted grants, uh, that's the three sixty-seven. You saw it on the revenue, we received the three sixty-seven, and we are spending three sixty-seven. Same thing with Hotel Motel, we received a hundred and eighteen on revenues, we are spending here a hundred and eighteen. On the TS Plus, expenses, we received the sixty-two, sixty-five, two forty, and we are putting here on the expenditure side of it. Capital projects, these are capital projects for twenty nineteen, five point three million dollars. Remember, capital projects, they don't finish at the end of the year, they roll over to the following year. So there are some projects that they started in nineteen, they will continue in twenty twenty. And in twenty twenty, we have other projects as well. So twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, they will be going on together until they finish. Some of them, they'll finish one year, some they'll finish more than one year. As they finish, we will be putting in some projects again. Our projects is up to five years, so as others very high as time, they will be hanging, it's ongoing on capital projects. Then we transfer again from general fund, devoting authority of two hundred thousand dollars. And you have Solid West, we saved the two ninety-three, and we spent two ninety-three. We had again to transfer from general fund, twelve million dollars. So total expenses, uh, what we have transferred from general fund and from other funds is it seventy-five million, five ninety-eight, three fifteen. Uh, this is expense, uh, this is a revenues that we have, sixty-nine million, two eighty-four, and here you have expenses of sixty-eight. If you ha- you move, or you subtract, uh, revenues, and you subtract expenses, you have a difference of seven hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty-six as our surplus. And that surplus is moved or put into our fund balance. So if our fund balance was positive, that would have been an addition to our fund balance. Now that one reduces our fund balance, uh, negative part of that. And I have, remember, fund balance is more talked in balance sheet. And before you, what you have is a balance sheet. You will not need to talk about fund balance until you have a need. So we have received revenues, enough revenues in twenty nineteen of sixty-nine million dollars. We spent sixty-eight million dollars. If nothing happens, you don't need fund balance. Should something happen unexpectedly, that's when you need fund balance. Because at any point in time, if you are familiar with the way FEMA works, should something happen, FEMA does not come up upfront with money. You have to spend money, they will reverse you. So should there be any other expenses that are not in our budget, that's where it will be. So you will not be here in fund balance every time. The next time maybe you'll be here in fund balance will be when the auditor is presenting the, the budget. They will show you, here is your fund balance. So with the balance sheet that you have in there, it details what are current assets. And current assets are what can support you, can support current liabilities. You are able to meet the expenses obligations that are before you. But if you need beyond that, you need ready day funds. That's where fund balance comes up to. So it doesn't mean that even if we talk, that fund balance just was wiped away, it's still there. What I want to get into details is, when we entered our fiscal year last year, the report that we have, which is online, our audited report, it shows that we have fund balance negative seven point five million dollars. It's in our books. Then we have received this revenue, we have received these expenses, we have fed it. That is seven point five million dollar is reduced, now it comes to six point seven million dollars as a negative. This one we discussed when we are talking about it, that if we have fund balance, we'll put it, if we don't have, that number will have gone up. However, this year, I think we have done a very good job. In this six point seven million dollars we have, we have three point six million dollars in contingency. So this is how it has been, I think we'll be talking about when we, we'll be making our budget amendment. We have three point six million dollars that the City Manager recommended, put aside one point one million dollars earmarked. Then we also earmarked one point five million dollars to reduce fund balance. So one, that one point five from this six point seven, that means we are already down. And if we remove three point six million dollars to this, actually, if we cannot allocate that three point six million dollars, in real sense, we have about three point one million dollars as a negative in fund balance. So we are going down if we can stick to what we are doing, we can put down our expenses, we are on the right step. We made it, as you know, we started twelve million dollars negative. And from twelve million dollars negative, now we are talking about six, we are talking about three. If we can continue on that, we are on the right path. So we will not need fund balance if there's nothing unusual. But we need to keep on what we have so far, now we have already implemented, there's the hiring freeze. The City Manager allows to hire case by case. We allow to- We allow to purchase equipment as they are needed, those that are critical. In other ways, we are trying to keep down expenses. So in short, we are on the right path. I will entertain questions and comments that you have.
I have a question. Uh, may I have a question? Do you have a contract for services with the development authority?
That is something that we hope to get in place. Uh, we would just need to meet with the council. Um, we've met with the development authority and the city personnel. And I guess we can put it on the agenda if the council is willing. You have a meeting coming up on the twenty-sixth. If the council is prepared to discuss it, if that will be an opportunity.
That would be retroactive.
Retroactive. Well, you mean as far as the services that the city can provide, it's from their reception?
The insurance, yes, absolutely.
We can make it whatever the council agrees to.
I think that would be equitable. Uh, the other thing is, uh, um, I want to ask you about this F Y two thousand and eight proposed amendment budget. That's laid on, is this laid on the agenda?
It's, yeah, we have two budget amendments coming.
I'll hold that conversation for a minute. But once again, thank you for a good report, appreciate that, like, three million dollar budget. Uh, and it's coming out even more than that, uh, just hang on.
Uh, yes. Okay. You got a bunch of people to teach.
Okay, let's get it.
I could answer everything that, um, that I could have asked and I'm really glad, um, that I asked for that. I'm really glad that I asked for the balance sheet. And, and the reason why I did was because I wanted everyone to see where we are as it relates to our assets, our abilities, and especially our fund balance and that we are all working towards reducing it. And I just think that that's important and it was important to say. So thank you so very much.
Mr. Karid. Um, where is the senior citizens fund?
The senior citizen fund has no revenues. The older American?
The older American.
The older American, you passed it that every year you are going to fund ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
So because there's no revenue, we transferred from general fund to support that event, that year.
So, I mean, should it not be on this balance sheet with like a zero balance or?
It is in the general fund in the statement that I have given in here. Uh, if you see here, it's here, it's a ten thousand and thirty-five. You went above by thirty-five dollars.
Got you. So these are, these are all the restricted funds.
So here you have the general fund is this one?
Right.
Then you have ten thousand, because it has no revenue, money is coming from general fund.
No, I understand. These are all funds that were created by ordinance or legislation.
Exactly.
Hotel, motel, tax.
Everything, yes.
Old Americans Fund. What's missing is the blighted property fund. So we passed that in June of twenty-nineteen, um, and I don't see it this year.
So that one, I think we will get into that and I think the city manager will be part of that. We will talk about that.
All right, but what I'm asking, so, so we have a, we have an item on the agenda to increase the fund. But the fund should already exist because we passed legislation for four months.
But you don't have expenses. So if that one was done, then you can always demand who comes from general fund. And that's what we will be getting into discussing because now you're increasing to a hundred-and-forty-four. I don't want to get into before.
All right, but I guess what I'm saying is, the original fund that, that exists and legislation directed whoever does that to move money into that fund. So there should be money, like that should appear and there should be money in that fund.
So Councilman Karid, you directed to move money from general fund. That means you are reducing the funding of there, but you didn't say what other expenses you are reducing. So I presented here the first October, our balanced budget.
So false. When we, when we created the older Americans Fund, we didn't say where we would take the ten thousand dollars from, but here it is.
You directed, in the ordinance, you directed the money will come from general fund. But that's an expenses, but here.
So you're just saying, if I had the word general fund, then they would, they would.
The difference is this one is an expense. You say, we want to meet these expenses. While the other one, you are taking money from revenues. And if you are taking money from revenues, you have to say what expenses are you reducing to make the balanced budget? And the budget balanced. So you are moving money that have been already allocated to fund expenses.
So let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
When we had, when we passed this four months ago, why did we have that conversation?
We said that one and if, Councilman Karid, I made an appointment to meet with you, I talked to the attorney.
No, but I'm saying, in the, in the public meeting, when we took a vote and we had a discussion about creating this fund, why was this like not brought? If, if this was an issue, so, so for four months, we created something that hasn't, that doesn't exist. And month after month after month, it hasn't existed. And I'm just wondering like why, why are we just now?
It, it may still be there because there's no corresponding expenses. So it may be there, it can transfer at any time, but there's no corresponding expenses.
So you're, so you're saying that we have a hundred blighted properties in this city, but there's no expenses for them? Because I think we have tons of expenses, which is why we created the fund.
How much have they spent? And where have they paid for, if we have some?
Councilman Karid, I think I got a little clarity. Is it mine?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think what Mr. Malazi is highlighting here is that the, this is a summary of actual expenses. So if I'm following correctly, the fund is there, but there has been no action taken or no expense. As a result, it is not shown. So he is saying that.
Are you saying that, is the fund there?
So I talked to you.
No, I'm just asking, is it, is it a yes or no question?
That's correct.
The fund is there.
The fund is there, that's correct.
Why wouldn't it just appear there?
It's still in the general fund.
Because it's still in the general fund. It's still in the general system.
It's, you know what, it's okay, we, we can wait till we have this, this discussion. But, but what I have a problem with is that the council directed for a fund to be created. Four months later, it still hasn't been created. That's a problem.
Okay, Ms. God.
So Mr. Malazi, um, just a quick question. For the twenty-nineteen proposed amendment, we're going to talk about that later.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll save those two questions. Um, in regards to the hotel motel tax that we received, did we actually allocate that money anywhere? I know, uh, South Fulton, Destination South Fulton, it was supposed to do something with that money.
So we have two parts of Hotel Hotel. There is restricted, a percentage of restricted, and there is, that we can use in general fund. So the restricted one, we were almost warned last time that the first two years we have not been using. We have to use in that year. So what we did was write a check to head out for the restricted purposes. However, they had not yet, uh, established the organization that the money will go. Now that one has already been established, the startup is waiting on that. So as soon as that one has finished it, the check is going there. So everything is included in there. We have the check that within ninety days, it has to go to them. But the rest of that is part of the general fund.
So what we earned, I guess, the year before, not twenty-nineteen, we wrote a check out for that amount?
This check I'm talking about includes the previous year and the twenty-nineteen.
And twenty-nineteen. So that, that money will be more to Destination South Fulton?
Correct.
And do you remember how much that was?
It's about ninety-five if I'm, ninety-five, right?
About ninety-four thousand.
Ninety-four, ninety-five thousand.
But the number that's on this is not right, a hundred-and-eighteen?
That one includes a part of it. So it's a fraction that goes there. That's what we received, the other one has to go to general fund.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Wallace.
The, um, the funds for confiscated, the, uh, the police confiscated asset funds, what is that going to, we're supposed, I have, that's unrestricted funds, correct? So what is that going to be updated?
So the nature of the fund, if you remember, I sent you, I sent you the report and the P D, the director, the city manager, we have been working there. There are some information that because some of the receipts are still under investigation, that we didn't want to make it public as it is, but I sent it to you. So far, we don't have any update, current update, but we are working on that one. And we will collect it, me, the city manager and the chief will keep you posted.
Yes, but Mr. Malazi, even though you have some funds that, um, have not been approved for, uh, revenue purposes, we still are supposed to report that. Uh, for example, I was looking at a financial report in San Springs and they have a total of funds and then they have, uh, a total of funds that have been expended and then they have a total of funds that have been not approved. So, uh, it is still supposed to be reported in our financials, the investigation. I, I do understand that, but, uh, it's still supposed to be reported.
I sent you for September, end of September, I sent you and nothing has taken place since then. So that report you have is still the same.
But that information is supposed to be available for the public to see as well. So if possible.
Okay, we, we will.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is, uh, you know, this conversation keeps coming up. And we'll talk about fund balance or six point seven million dollar deficit. Uh, can you please, uh, get some type of communication out about that? Because residents are thinking that we have a deficit and we do not have a deficit. We have a deficit as it relates to where we want to, our goal, where we want to go and how much fund balance we want to have. And based on the policy that we passed, but we do not have a deficit deficit as far as we're, we are making enough revenue, we're paying our expenses. Am I explaining this correct?
Yes.
And then I'm, I'm going to also yield to Councilmember, uh, Rao, because this is very conflicting and, uh, I don't want residents to think that we are broke. And I don't want residents to think that we can't pay our bills.
So there are some communities where they will, we have never here, since twenty-seventeen, we have never come to a day where I have to sit down with the staff to look for bills, which one should we pay? Which one should we defer? It has never happened. We have never delayed to pay payroll for everyone. But they can understand that we started with the twelve million dollars negative. No bank wanted to have us because they didn't know we are going to make it. So if you look where we have come from and where we are going and we keep up, we have an ordinance. And the ordinance says we have to have about two million dollars. Two million dollars this year, I'm saying we have put aside, which will be getting there, three point six million dollars. If nothing comes up, that money is there. And I talked about T plus, which I didn't talk about. Now we are saying about six point one million dollars plus, that is three, we end up with three point one million dollars. However, we have not yet received, uh, our sales tax money for September because we receive one month behind. So that's another two million dollars that we have not received for the month of September. So if you add that two million dollar, that means we have a million or less than a million dollar in deficit. We always underestimate revenue, just in case something happens. If we can keep on where we are going, we will make it very soon. Remember in our ordinance, we talked about three years. So that in ordinance, it talks about three years. If we can keep it up, we will make it. Before it did, it went to eight of twenty-twenty-one. Unless something happens, we drift from where we are.
All right, Ms. Brown.
Uh, thank you for that. I want to follow what my Councilwoman Willis said. Uh, in twenty-seventeen, um, I sponsored the legislation and Councilwoman Gilger co-sponsored with me. Um, and what we did is we adopted a fund balance policy. And the policy was to maintain active balances and reserves in case something happened. And so what it was is that we wanted to set aside between ten and twelve percent of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. So like, um, as been previously stated, as a target, if we had that much money in the bank in case something happens. So, uh, I just want the public to understand that. So when we go out and we repeat that we have a deficit, when we don't, we are hurting ourselves. So just be mindful, these terms can't just be interchanged between deficit and fund balance. I just wanted to offer that, that clarity. I also wanted to mention that, um, when you look at other cities when they incorporated, most of them didn't have a fund balance at all for five or six years. So, I mean, if you listen back to when our auditors came, they actually applauded us for us moving in this direction early on. So we are actually ahead of the game. So I just want to point that out and, uh, thank you.
And none of the, uh, new municipalities that started, they paid off their debt in the less than five years. None of them. And again, we saved, we budgeted for insurance premiums for five million dollars. However, we saved it seven million dollars.
Oh, I very clearly, I have a fiscal concern, so trust me.
We are on the right path if we, we can maintain what we are doing.
Okay, I wouldn't have brought this conversation.
Here you are. No, I think I wanted to say, I think that it was really, really important to put it in the right context because it is the, in the right, we started out with zero and then we moved to a negative twelve million real quick because we started out with nothing. And that's really how we got there with what's left over with that seven, but it's continuing to come down. And that's what's really, really important. And that's why I asked you, like I said before, to bring the balance sheet so that everyone can see that the balance sheet is really about what you own, what you owe and what's left over. And it doesn't have anything to do with other types of financial statements, which are focused on revenue and expenses and what's left. So I think we're doing good. It's there, but we're doing good.
I'd like to see a man.
I'm just here to kind of chime in. I was looking at something, uh, regarding San Springs because I know we always get compared to them. But, you know, it should be noted that we're not kind of increasing the burden on our residents because we're a startup city. I was just reading this, I just thought people would find it interesting. They had a three-hundred percent increase in the number of speeding tickets that they wrote to be able to cover their budget in the first two years. That's a, that's a big difference between the type of governance, leadership and management that we're implementing than some of the cities that are recognized as the model for startups. And so they've done a really good job of burying their Google results, so you don't find that easily. But that's just not the type of governance and action that you have here. And you are underspending repeatedly every year. So definitely kudos to the, to the treasurer as well as to the council, as well as our citizens for holding us accountable. But those type of things get lost in translation often. But I think we'd rather kind of make defruvial than to increase the number of speeding tickets by three-hundred percent.
All right, all right, I'll leave it there. Okay. Ms. Carter.
My next, next city, uh, city attorney's one K report. So I do have two requests from the council. Um, you have your U R A process that we are putting in place. And we are hoping, um, you have, you guys have put together a lot of great projects, renovations to a lot of the park facilities, um, recreational areas, old national, welcome halls. There's a lot of funding that we have in tow. If we don't amend the U R A list to incorporate the recent. If we don't amend the U R A list to incorporate the recent budget amendments this year, then it's going to impede significantly the validation process that we have set in tow with the finance, with the financial advisors, as well as the bond attorney that we're working with. So, my request is that if the meeting will accommodate, you've already set a meeting for the twenty-sixth, if we could put the U R A, um, on that meeting schedule so we can continue with the validation process to, to get these projects covered in, in this year. And the second request would be if we could also, um, the mayor indicated, um, the agreement with the development authority as far as services, if we could put that on to maybe just entertain that conversation again about the, um, services and the cost structure. I think that would be a good timing to try to finish this in, in fiscal, in this year as well.
I think that one of the things on the U R A side that, uh, there was some, there was some grammatic issues that was in, this, 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 right. Uh, and so, when we do things like that, 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 that slows down the process. And so, uh, I think that if it's ready to go and, and grammatically correct and say it what we want to say, I think it's fine. All right?
Why would we need a motion, um, to authorize that on the agenda for the twenty-sixth, those who I, that, those who I, which would be the U R A as well as the session about?
I, I would say, I would say if they're ready to go. I mean, I can't, you want to add something premature, you know, to come with it, on this?
Well, the only thing that needs to be clarified is, um, the address for one of the parks, and I'm actually gonna take out all the addresses, period, because I don't want to put the address and then limit ourselves to just that address. There's other parcels that have addresses that are slightly different. So, I'm, I'm including every reference to addresses, and then, um, I think Councilwoman Rao asked me to clarify some of the language for perspective of what we're doing in San Antonio. It was consistent with what we would want to produce the copy at that time.
I just wanted to make sure the address is correct, so if you take an amount of profit.
Yeah, we're taking out a lot of profit. And that's in the, the copy that we have available now, so. And then, um, what I also do is I put authorization for myself, as well as the clerk, to tidy up any, um, proofing, editing, numbering, um, in these documents. So, even after you adopt something, we can easily clean up anything that's there.
I don't, I don't think I, I would entertain, you know, just voting on something I haven't seen on the agenda yet. I mean, uh, it came back because of issues. So, once the issues are cleared up, it should be an issue about putting it on the agenda. So, I don't, I, we've never done that before, to vote on something that we haven't seen and put on a dish, on the agenda for another issue.
Well, what I would do is if you authorize it on the agenda, and I would just forward the copies by email and say, this is what we'll be considering.
Okay, just forward the copies, let us look at it, and we'll put it on the agenda.
Oh, so just do make those.
Forward the copies, forward the copy, make your, make your, uh, adjustments, and then we'll put it on the agenda.
So, when you have a special meeting, we're limited to what's in the call of the meeting?
Yes.
So, we don't, so if you, if you don't authorize me in advance to present this, that data, we can be able to proceed with the, the grand is full call.
Go ahead, Ms. Green.
So, previously, in last month's meeting, we converted twelve-ten, which is a regularly scheduled council meeting, to just a zone meeting. I think that these topics would be better served at the twelve-ten meeting. It will give more time to, uh, go over these lists. We also have some budget ordinances that are a first read, and we will have to have a second meeting to even pass those. So, I think all of these budget issues could be on the agenda of the twelve-ten meeting. We just need to reestablish the twelve-ten.
Mr. Don, have we started, have we established a budget for the twelve-ten meeting?
No, I think what he's saying is that these are budgetary items that have to be addressed prior to the end of basically this calendar year. And so, he's saying for the ease of operations, like one budget amendment is only here today. I think it's the first read.
The two budget amendments.
Or two, and I think, well, and I think at least one of them is the first read.
They're both first.
What Mr. Khalid is recommending is that let the second read occur on December tenth, and you could bundle all of these financial issues into one meeting versus trying to carry them into twenty twenty. Which I think we can, that gives us, if you make, take an action today, it will give staff an opportunity to prepare and submit within the clerk, the clerk's current timeline. So, I, I think you would have my support.
I'm gonna change the motion.
So, I'll make a motion to reestablish the regular meeting.
Thank you. If I remove the second, any discussion?
Yes, um, for the fiscal nineteen version of the amendment, I would like to, um, are we going to discuss that at all today, or maybe, okay, I would too.
Okay. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Okay.
So, ma'am, I think as you have requested on the, uh, budget amendment key, some of those, uh, activities related to the budget amendment does tie into real estate and litigation. And so, it may be a good idea that at whatever point you discuss that, you have a brief executive session prior.
Litigation and.
Yes, you're.
So, we have, I'm sorry, we, we established a regular meeting, which means that at five P M. we'll have a work session. At six P M. we'll have an executive session.
Well, I, I don't, that's your decision.
And, no, that, that, that's, that's what we just did. We established a regular meeting. So, our regular meetings are a work session at five, an executive session at six, and a meeting at seven.
Is that where we voted on that, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. All right, ma'am, that, go ahead, I'm gonna leave that alone.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Number three, council approval to authorize the city manager to provide a letter to Union C, authorizing them to provide water services to city of San Francisco residents located at fifty-seven ninety-five Dawson Road. Item number five, council approval of finance committee appointment. Councilmember Rao appointing, uh, Robert Hawkins, Councilmember Gilliard appointing Robert Harvey, both to the finance committee. And item number six, council approval to extend the alcohol renewal deadline date.
I'll entertain a motion. Second. If I remove the second, any, any discussion? Yes.
Um, just clarification on the finance. If a, if a council member is tired of debate, appoint two, I'm just trying to get clear.
Oh, yes.
I didn't understand.
Yes, yes.
So, okay.
All right. Let's vote. That passes unanimously, Mr. Madam Clerk.
Next item is the previous item of agenda. Council approval and, the second read, approval and adopting of the false alarm ordinance.
I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve adopting false alarm ordinance amendment.
Any discussion? Carry none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Mr. Madam Clerk.
Next item is council approval of adopting total code enforcement ordinance, second read.
I'll make a motion to approve these ordinance.
Second. I have a question. Do you come up? You gave, you gave to me a financial impact study, was that correct?
That's correct.
Would you, would you, uh, tell us what that financial impact study says?
So, I discussed, actually, we are supposed to be, have discussed that one from the last meeting with the city manager, but unfortunately, we didn't. So, we talked today, and the, we explained what the impact will be on that one. What is the impact it will be, it's asking for, uh, removal or putting aside a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to remove it from general, from all revenues of code enforcement have to be put aside, plus one and a, one and a half percent of general fund for a total of hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. That is not in the budget. And I said, the best way to do, instead of allocating a revenue for expenses, is to allocate expenses, just as we did with the old America. You say, we don't have to fundraise, we don't have to do this, but it moved from general fund, or when you are making a budget, put aside so much money. The problem with this is, if you say, you remove a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from general fund, which is a balanced budget, what expenses are you removing? What expenses are you reducing? And the other one is you are saying, take all code enforcement revenues. You will not know those revenues until by the end of the fiscal year. So, you cannot spend now if you want to use that money to spend it for code enforcement projects until by the end of the year, when you will know how much you have corrected.
Right.
So, instead of that, it's a better way of allocating expenses. It can come from wherever you may want, reduce other expenses, or move money from, uh, contingency and allocate it.
So, and I hear what you're saying, Ms. Malaz. So, you, you would have made some direction as to where the reduction in, in line item was to account for this hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-one thousand ninety-five cents.
Yes, I discussed that one with the attorney, and I requested if I would meet with Councilwoman Khalid so that we can explain, and unfortunately, none of that did it happen. So, the city manager here said, okay, let's say meet it with Councilman Khalid so that we can explain. Instead of using revenues, we can use expenses and allocate, so it will still draw what he wants it down.
Back to Mr. Judge, Mr. Don, you want to say anything, add anything there?
Yeah, so that, I guess that's, that's close. What I would, I think we can do is, we do have to establish the fund because the council directed us to, it's that simple and that plain. But I also believe that we can look at past year citations to do projections, which is the same thing that we do whenever we budget. And so, while we will know the actual expenses, uh, as they come in, I'm sorry, the actual revenues as they come in, we simply couldn't spend money until we collect. So, there are two ways to do it. Either you budget for it, and you add an expense at the beginning, and then you offset it with projected revenues, or as the council is currently directed, they've allocated a certain amount of money through ordinance, and as we collect the fifty percent, collect those revenues, we're then authorized to, uh, use them to carry out all of these blight activities. It's, it's kind of what's your flavor, but I think the ordinance does direct us in what the, the council's preference is, and once they vote, we'll be able to take action.
But what's, what do you think is the most reasonable, prudent way to do it?
Well.
I'm just talking about.
For me, the best way is to approximately, which is the community development director will be the best person to estimate what, what will be needed. So, in, in this case, you may say, we need two hundred thousand dollars. We need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Put that one in an expenditure, period. Next year, that two hundred is not enough, increase the budget. Don't talk with revenues, because revenues are general, they are put in one part. In that part is where you allocate all expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. And what, you would, you would say is different?
Well, I think, you know, Charles Abbott contract is a good example. I, I wouldn't want it to go opposite of our, our city treasurer. I think he's being safe, sound, and frugal, so there's always a benefit to that. But I think when we look at, like, the Charles Abbott contract, for example, that's an example as to where we have outperformed the contract. I think it's no, uh, uh, it's not a secret that blight has been an issue for the city. And so, as we find and collect and solve the issue, we will have revenues, and it just requires us to make sure we stay diligent and adjust accordingly. And so, with fifty percent of those funds, I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the ordinance in about a week, but I think it's about fifty percent.
It's a hundred percent.
Of all things.
Got it. So, there may be some, some adjustments that may need to be made there, but I think as you collect, you'll be able to track regularly and then allocate funds accordingly. And there, again, there's no shortage of blight. So, it's, 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 what is your preference? You can do either way. I kind of say we'll make a recommendation and then defer to the council. I know there have been conversations, and so, based on what you vote on, we'll be able to respond.
Mr. Reed?
Um, so, Mr. Malaz, you said that, that it's, that it's hard to make a projection about the expenses?
Because, no, we can make it from what we have corrected so far.
Right, because you have made that projection.
Right, but that a hundred percent, like last year, it was about seventy-five thousand dollars, which you will not maybe do what you want.
No, it won't.
Yeah, so it will not be enough.
So, so, what I want people to understand is that we're talking in circles, but we ain't knocked down no houses. There are houses in Hillendale that have been blighted mayor since you were county commissioner. Why haven't we knocked them down? Because we never put any money aside to do it. Um, is Ms. Reed here?
I am.
Um, could you, could you come forward, please? Um, we have a blighted property listed, it has forty-two houses on it. I bet some of y'all could add about ten more of those. Um, how much would it cost just to knock down an average house? And what are the steps? And why hasn't code, why hasn't community development knocked down any blighted houses?
So, we did research to see what that average would look like nationally. So, it says about a minimum of five thousand to fifteen thousand, um, based on large square footage court. Um, so, with that being said, depending on the square footage, that price will, um, vary. So, if you take one home per district, so take that seven to fifteen thousand as a max, that'd be about, I think, one oh five is what I calculated. So, that puts you at a hundred and five thousand dollars, to where if every year we knock down homes, that's ready to be condemned, um, that would free you at least one home per district.
So, one home per district. And so far, the past two years, how many homes have we knocked down?
No.
No. Um, it's my understanding, because I want, I want people to understand, because I know that sometimes people think, I call code enforcement over and over and over, and they're not doing anything. But actually, you've written dozens and dozens of tickets, but all that they do is result in a lien.
Right.
That cannot be collected on unless the house is sold. So, as long as nobody sells the house, you can't collect on the lien, and the house just stands there. It would actually take an inspection, a legal process to seize the house, and a foreclosure process. All those have to be done even before we spend the fifteen thousand knocking the house down. Is that why we haven't knocked any houses down in, in two years?
I can't speak on why we haven't knocked down.
So, so, anyway, so the, the purpose of this ordinance, I'm gonna go ahead and, and call the question, because the purpose of this ordinance is to stop pussyfooting around and actually put some money where our mouths are to knock down some houses. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think. Second. If I remove the second, discussion is fine.
I think all of us are concerned about blighted properties. I support this ordinance, but we have to stop doing this and not putting the funds and finding the source of the funds. Because that's why we're in some of the situation, we're passing ordinances, and we haven't aligned it with the money. We need to come back with the line item that is coming out of, so we, like you said, we gotta move it from somewhere. We need to figure out where that somewhere is so that we can do something. I think we all have blighted properties that we want to knock down, but, uh, and, and I heard from our code enforcement board member that they want the support as well. But I'd rather finance come back and tell us, listen, we can move it from here, if we're gonna deal with some budget changes anyway at the next meeting, let's do it, and let's do it right.
Okay, all right. Still in discussion? Well, let, let me just say this.
Do you have a suggestion?
Ms. Malaz, you want to say something?
So, on the tenth, we'll give you, uh, how much we'll put outside?
Let me, let me say this. Nobody's trying not to do the right thing. Even the, even the treasurer said that. Treasury just said, just tell me where to get the money from. You know, and what are we gonna, what are we gonna take, what are we gonna put down? So, and, and the case about when I was commissioner, you know, we, we tore down houses on the community development block grant. And, so, don't go there. So, the other thing is.
I'm, I'm just driving houses in my name.
Tell you what.
That'd have been up since you.
I know, truth is, you ain't, okay. Uh, but let me say this. Let me say this. That's what we need to be doing, is applying for a community development block grant. And if we plan to apply for a community development block grant, we could have tore a lot of houses down, we waiting for an estate from Isaiah, when we could have been getting it for the.
it from the federal government. Hold up, hold up, hold up. I'm going to lay out that's one to keep people understood today. So, so he called, I have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor? That's four and three. That's four and three, pass. So we're going to vote now, we call the previous question.
Previous question, was it a previous question?
Yes.
Okay.
We call the previous question. I'm looking, let me see, I didn't see. This was the previous question, right, Ms. Trezor? Let's take a vote on the previous question, let me see your hand.
We just did. Four, three. What's the question?
To go to the previous question.
To go to the previous question. So who wants to vote on the previous question? Let's vote on the previous question.
The previous question was to adopt the code enforcement order.
I want an order. Call a vote.
Mr. Malazi just said that he was going to bring it back on where the money would be coming from on December the tenth.
Okay, so here's the deal.
We're not willing to wait till December the tenth to find out.
So if he could do that for December the tenth, why didn't he do that for this meeting? Because this is the second reason. Excuse me, excuse me. We need to vote on this. I'm calling for the vote already. It went four, three. It both went four, three.
Go right. I thought it was the previous question.
That was the first one.
This was, this was the motion for, it was four, three. So I'm going to, I'm going to make, I need to make the second motion. I'm going to instruct our, we have a first read for our budget amendment. I'm going to instruct our CFO slash treasurer to find that money and put it in the second week of budget.
That's what I said.
Properly moved the second, all those in favor? That passed, that makes sense. Madam Chair.
The next item on the agenda is item number four, council approval of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three city of South Fulton strategic plan.
Okay, I'll entertain motions.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three.
Properly moved the second discussion. I would just like to know that under goal number three of the strategic plan, one of the goals is to knock down blighted property. Do we know, hearing your, the discussion, all those in favor? Madam Perk, did we pull this off of the?
Yes. It was off of the consent. To go to the regular agenda.
Is there any discussion? No, we're good, we're going to vote. All right, all, there's a motion on the floor, am I correct, Madam Perk?
Motion to approve.
Second by.
Willis.
Willis, okay, let's vote. That passes five to. Ms. Kier, you are in.
Next item on the agenda, council approval to purchase technology for the fire department.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to purchase mobile technology for fire department, not fifteen, a hundred and twenty thousand.
Properly moved the second, in discussion. Hearing that, all those.
Mayor, I do have one discussion I have, and this involves a purchase of fire. So you have other fire purchases that are in the U R A, and after you're putting this or allowing this to go on the December tenth agenda, I text our financial advisor, because my concern is, you're not going to be able to get the funding for these projects in this year if you put it on that date. And his response was, he absolutely cannot get the funding in two thousand nineteen if you wait until the tenth to approve, to approve the U R A, which means that, and I asked him, I said, why is it going to impact them negatively if they don't get the financing this year? And his response is that the banks have aggressive targets and goals to hit as far as funding, and if you don't get it approved this year, then if you go into the next fiscal year, their goals and priorities are going to restart, and there's not going to be incentive to give you a good interest rate, which means that if you hear this, if you hear U R A on December tenth, he will not be able to get the funding this year.
So have that affect?
This one is in the general fund, this is not?
Well, I know this is in the general fund, but I'm saying, it's, we're talking about fire purchases, so I'm just letting you know that if you don't at some point in this meeting reconsider putting the other additional fire purchases to the U R A and that funding on for your meeting on the twenty-sixth, I'm just giving you a heads up that you will not be able to get your U R A funding and the anticipated interest rate in this, in this
As opposed to motion, am I correct, Madam Perk?
No, that was discussion on approval of this purchase. And this purchase is not related to the U R A.
Okay, so that was my question. You know, I was trying to hook in what you were saying to this purchase. So we're saying this purchase is not related to the U R A?
No, this purchase is not related to the U R A, it's only related in the sense that it involves fire purchases that are not going to occur.
Okay, but we can move on, move on.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's all I wanted. Is there a motion?
Motion was made by Councilman Morale, second by Councilman Moreland.
Let's vote.
For the fire.
For the fire, for the fire department. That's six and one, that's unanimous. Okay.
Next item is council approval to enter into an agreement with moro roller for radios for the public safety and code enforcement department.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve, for approval to enter to a agreement with moro roller for police radios.
Second. Properly moved the second, in discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam Perk?
Next item is council approval of a resolution policy for road closures.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for road closure policy.
Properly moved the second, in discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor? That passes two people. That's unanimous. Madam Chair?
Next item is the first reading to amend the F Y nineteen budget.
First reading, treasurer, it's the first, it's just the first.
It's a first reading.
And there's this question.
Yo, I have a question. So, on the first read, I do have a question. You gave us this proposed amendment. What was published to the public is different from what you had given us. So there were a couple of things that were over budget in the fiscal nineteen budget. One was the District Six budget of two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. The other one was the contracted legal services for forty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Public workers over budget by five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. We already talked about the thirty-five dollar over budget, that's, that's, that's not material. But the sixty-four thousand dollars and nine hundred and eighteen dollars and anticipated, note, two hundred thousand dollars of financing. And so I just have some concern, because a part of us being physically responsible is, when we set a budget, we're supposed to work within our budget. For example, each council member has sixty-five thousand dollars allocated to them each year. And that sixty-five thousand dollars is supposed to be used for us to operate, whether it's to mail, whether it's to take training, whether it's for hospitality, we have a lot of items that's supposed to work. So my concern is, I understand you have to do your job and balance the budget, I'm not criticizing that, but what I am concerned about, and I'm going to ask the mayor to investigate, so since we're talking about investigations, and we're going to discuss investigations, I would love the mayor to investigate, we received information from several G M A, at G M A training, that there was a class taken in Jethal Island, and District Six council member paid over, close to three thousand dollars for that class, and that person did not get credit for that class. So therefore, our tax dollars we spent for a class that a person did not get credit for.
Yes, that's the class I left for her.
So I would like for the mayor to investigate that expenditure.
Yeah, that's the class I left for.
Yeah, Councilman Morale, did you take that class as well? Councilman, may I do a mind? Councilman Morale, did you take that class as well? And did you stay for the class in its full entirety? Did you get credit for the class?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like for you to investigate that expenditure. Let's talk about investigating that expenditure next Tuesday.
All right.
I mean, when we have a special coffee.
Okay, that's, we've had the first reading. All right, next one, Madam Perk.
Next item is the first read for the F Y twenty budget on it.
Anybody have any questions? Not?
Wait, I have a question. But actually, I was just on the floor. But the twenty nineteen proposed amendment, the question that I have was about the economic development destination, South Fulton. For fiscal year twenty nineteen, we showed they spent one point four.
Are you on the F Y twenty?
So the one point, Mr. Malazi is saying that the budget was one point four million, it's a change. Where, where did that money actually go? Because he said one million shows I don't know if there's more to development, or is added more people.
Remember the Charles Abbott contract with us at that time, remember, we hadn't moved it? So those expenses permitting Charles Abbott, et cetera, et cetera, were all under there. So don't, yeah, don't forget, they stay there until, yeah, in twenty, they move, and nineteen, they're in the same place, yeah.
If you guys ask any department, if you need to teach us how to expand, we'll pay hundreds of years.
That explains it, thank you, sir.
Okay. Madam Perk?
Next item, council approval of first reading of amending tax ordinance, T A dash zero zero one, section nineteen, point three, point three one, food trucks.
Any discussion? Hearing that, Madam?
Council approval of first read of amending tax ordinance, T A dash zero zero two, to revise the city overlay district.
Any question, discussion, question?
The only, it's not directly related to that, because I know that it's being held, but what I would like to request is a copy, or council received a copy of the zoning commission meeting minutes, minutes of the meetings. And really, as Councilman Khalid and I talked about earlier, we don't get the minutes from any of the committees, so that would be kind of good, you know, to have, so that we could, you know, we could be online or whatever, as long as we could have those minutes.
Okay, so they'll be unofficial, because they won't be approved by the board, so it'll be like an unofficial copy of that, is presented to you before their meeting to adopt or approve the minute. Kind of very similar to how you run your meetings. They have to approve the minutes before, right, fully drafted.
That'd be good. Okay. All right, Madam Perk, I'm sorry. Do we have a date yet when we're going to bring back this on the moro?
So we will have that file, as always noted, that's going to be completed in December. So they're coming before you, your January, I think it's the fourteenth, I may be correct on that date, but I think it's January fourteenth as a work session. They're going to will out the changes that they've made in the edg, and introduce that to you, so that, kind of going back to your point, I introduced to them that you were concerned that you're going to have, okay, it's going to be January fourteenth, that you had concerns about, I guess, dissecting, or not really dissecting, but kind of looking at a five-hundred-page file, and trying to understand that. And so they're going to kind of come in, the work session for you again, explain to you what they've done, show the work, receive the lessons from you all, before sharing it with the public, to ensure that that's in fact the direction you were wishing they were going with the file.
So do you have any update on, this is my final question, do you have any update on when the entire process would be completed and we might have a new zoning code? Will that happen in spring of twenty twenty, summer twenty twenty?
We've always said we spring of twenty twenty, so you'll have your review process happening from January up until close to, I would say, maybe March. You'll be pretty much reviewing the file. So we had a meeting on yesterday confirming that. Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Next item, council approval of first reading of amending tax ordinance, T A dash zero zero three, to revise provisions applicable to regulations of service stations and convenience stores.
Any discussion? Go right here.
I would like the city attorney to give a look at this before it comes back for the second read, about looking at smoke paraphernalia being sold in a certain proximity to a school. Yeah, so who could, those kind of things. Please look at how we could amend that and address that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Attorney, if you recall, a couple of months ago, I sent you Milton's policy regarding to bake shops, and I asked you, is there a way that we could pass a legislation in the city of South Fulton, similar to that banning futuristic bake shops in the city of South Fulton? This measure has been taken in Milton, and I think another city in Metro Atlanta, so if you can, look at that. And then I would love to, if you would like to co-sign, sir, I would love to co-sign that at the top of the year with Councilman Morale.
Next item is council approval of first reading of amending tax ordinance, T A dash zero zero four, to regulate party houses in residential districts.
Any discussion?
Mary, council that ends the work agenda for today.
I'd like to make a motion for a second session regarding real estate and real estate only.
Only on real estate?
There's real estate, that was my statement.
Motion is, was it a second, Mr. Baker, your motion was on real estate only? There was a second by whom?
Okay. Go ahead. Can I make a substitute motion to add personnel?
Second.
Councilor, go to you. No, not go, I'm sorry, Rowell.
I second, I second it.
Hold up.
Do we have time limit?
She is saying her motion.
We made a substitute motion. Councilman Baker made a substitute motion to include a late session for personnel and real estate only.
All those in favor? Someone requested that we don't make them, so I'm just. All right, that passes, go.
I second.
Properly moved the second, in discussion, all those in favor? All right. Madam Perk, was there any?
No, no actions in this in discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Properly moved the second to adjourn.
Discussion. Good night, everyone. Thank you for sharing.
All right. All in favor, Mr. Baker, raise your hand. All right.